William, and we will allow you to continue on with your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. I guess before I start, if there's any to build on Councilor Bigger's thoughts or what we're discussing, you always sit back, gee, I wish you would have asked that. Is there any questions or things that you thought about or need a clarification on the first budget that we discussed? Good meal, a little bit of food on your stomach helps everybody think of something. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Your Worship, the second part of the presentation this afternoon is the utility side. And the philosophy with the utility side is that it's underground, and as long as you can flush your toilet, turn your water on, and you can brush your teeth, you're happy. And if you're happy, that makes our utility group happy as well. The fact that everything is underground, you don't think about it, and you don't recognize what's going on until something bad happens. And if something bad happens with the utility, the infrastructure, it's bad. And the proverbial stuff that hits the fan is literal, so it's no longer proverbial. So, the town's infrastructure system really developed in the early seventies. So, we're hitting that forty, fifty-year lifespan of the facilities that we have in place now. And so, what's happening is the importance of our asset management plan is that we are in the ability to manage it through condition assessments, through inspections, and trying to stay ahead of it. So, really, that's the essential components that we have for our system. We are fortunate in one way that it is manageable, and again, nineteen seventy-six is a relatively young system to speak of when you have communities in the region that have stuff that is hundred, two-hundred years old. So, we're fortunate in that we are, we're still dealing with relatively new infrastructure. But that's not to dismiss the fact that some of the moving parts do have finite lives. And that's what we're going to be dealing with a lot, with a lot of the, on the, either utility side or the water side. So, the sewer side or the water side. The gravity lines generally don't pose a lot of a problem. And I think we've, we've tried to educate the residents with things like the non-flushable wipes. There's no such thing as a flushable wipe. We've tried to get that message across regularly. We've tried to communicate to our residents with water conservation, whether they're on the municipal system or whether they're on the groundwater, in their own private well. It's important to make sure that they manage that appropriately. And that message has been good in that we have the ability to communicate that to our residents on a regular basis. From an operations perspective, our program is focused on that delivery to the residents. Go that way. So, our budget this year is relatively consistent, presented in, as we have in previous years. It's broken down into three main areas. One's the water side, then we have the sewer side, and then we have the overall utility administration. And the water, again, is broken down into four main components. The well field, and that's where we get the water from. That's the wells that we have on the other side of the Route One, and how we manage those wells. The water treatment, for us, at this stage of the game, we're relatively small system, so our water treatment requirements from the province are restricted to that level that we can do through onsite pumps with chlorine. We don't get into any sort of primary treatment, mechanical treatment of our water system. We're fortunate, we have good groundwater source. The groundwater itself is potable. It is a hard water source, and that's, I'm sure, most residents will recognize that, and most people in the community have water softeners. But it is a viable and valuable source. The water pumping is getting it from point A to point B. For us, the bulk of the pumping is essentially getting it from the wells to either the distribution or the storage. So, on the Millennium Drive side, we were pumping the water from the wells on the other side of the highway up to the big water tower, the tank that you see over Market and Millennium. And in Ridgewood Park, we're actually pumping wells into a small storage system on Millennium Drive that then goes into the distribution system for the residents. So, we can see the costs for the programs that we deliver on the water side. The sewer infrastructure is essentially the ground, the pipes that we find in the ground. Those are gravity lines that will take the wastewater from the homes to the trunk lines, the collector lines and out to the, whether it's a pumping station, to go by gravity to the treatment facilities, our lift stations. Again, we're going to be focusing on those particular items for the next little while. They are the, as I touched on a little earlier, the, those mechanical moving parts of the system that are subject to work, wear and tear, corrosion from the wastewater, and those are the things that are going to see the most requirement for investment, for replacement and management. Finally, the sewer treatment, and we're fortunate in that our sewer treatment, the lagoon facilities are, have been relatively new, just been rehabilitated in the last fifteen years, so that we have the opportunity now to make sure that we continue to manage and maintain them on a regular basis. When we look at the programs that we have in place, the utility administration, the last thing of that is really, you get into the, as it says, the administration, the staffing time, some of the technical times, some of the programs that are used. We see how the staff levels are shared amongst departments, so they're not all dedicated to one. You may see a staff person that has a fifty percent or a ninety percent time dedicated to the utility side, and the administration will cover things like that. With the water department, really, there's no main line item changes that we're looking at. We're looking at the system upkeep for hydrants, things that either are hit in the snow program or somebody hits it off the side of the road. And also with the meters, now, we supply water meters to any new residents that are connecting to the municipal system. So, we have to keep an inventory and stock, and we supply those and manage those on a regular basis, if they're damaged or if they're not performing properly. Or, as I said, if it's new construction and somebody needs a meter, we'll supply it. So, residential and commercial, as long as you're connected to a municipal system, they're on a water meter. If they're on a private well, there's no water meter. Their residents are responsible for the management of that system, hundred percent. We have conducted a regular review of our water distribution and planning study, and if Council, some of the former council members will recall, two years ago, we had CBCL look at a phasing program for our water system. So, that distribution system, when we looked at it, we presented with a forty-five million dollar investment in the community that would be substantial investment if we chose to go that way. It's there to use. We are taking the opportunity to review any major road construction in advance of that work. We look at it if there's an opportunity to expand our water system. And we touched a little bit in the Street Capital Program where we have the Old Coach Road and Hovey Road, where we were doing some paving. But it is a natural extension of the water system, and we can do an extension of that water system so we can get it in the ground before we pave the street. And in doing that, we prepare an area that has vacant land for future development. We have the opportunity to connect to a high-use institutional zone, being Seniors Legion Court down at the end of Hovey Road. So, we take advantage of those types of opportunities for those, as was mentioned earlier, the low-hanging fruit type of things when it comes to the water system. There are major expansion opportunities that we'll be coming back to Council with over the next little while that will require significant investment. Now, we're not talking, you know, the five, six-hundred thousand dollars that we see for some small roadways. We're talking three-point-two, four, or five million dollar investments at that opportunity. And it's as much a case of planning, but it's also more so a case of financing. Do we have the users to offset the costs associated with putting that distribution system in place? Are we going to be borrowing it? Do we have the debt capacity to do that? Those are all the decisions that Council will be aware of when the time comes when we have to make those investments in the municipal water system. But in the short term, our short-term capital program, we have an opportunity with the gas tax, or the former gas tax, the Community Bills Fund, to look at that Hovey Road and Old Coach Road system, that we can leverage that money to help us increase our system capacity. On the sewer side, again, we're not seeing a lot of significant changes in the previous line items that have been presented in the past, the previous year. General supplies are up slightly, and that's a function as we grow. As I said, we added one-point-three kilometers of roadway to the community. That also translates in one-point-three kilometers of sewer system to the community. So, we have to maintain and manage that. Lift stations, we're seeing equipment breakdowns, and we're buying time in the different lift stations. A pump to be replaced on the duplex system, that's a pump station, has two pumps in it. Usually, you can run one alternate and help extend the life on it. On high-volume spots where there's a lot of water coming into the area, sometimes both the pumps will kick in. So, we're finding that the use is getting, the useful life is being shortened by these pumps. So, we have to set aside some cash on a regular basis to replace some pumps. And that's where we see this equipment upgrade. Thirteen thousand dollars is for wastewater pumps. Electricity, as like everybody else, we're subject to the whims of MB Power. For us, as much as they are talking about rate increases, they also look at the demand charges. And for us, after we get to certain peaks and certain levels, the charges go up because we exceeded our demand charge. So, what we're looking at are lift stations. As we go through and replace them, we're looking at incorporating efficiencies, not only from a greenhouse gas and a climate change perspective, but also from an electrical efficiencies perspective, where we can bring the pump, the pump, electrical demand down. And what that does is, as well, changes the demand costs and savings to the town in the long run. But for now, we're subject to the costs that MB Power has set, and this year, we're seeing a projected nine-thousand-dollar increase in our electrical charges. Same for the sewer treatment. Forty, fifty-four hundred dollars increase. And if you recall, the members of Council were on the tour last week or two weeks ago. The lagoon is very high-demand electricity because of the air raiders. All of the lagoons were, the air was being pumped out. The blower billings are running full bore all the time, pushing air through the systems, and that's a high electrical demand. Very little from a moving parts perspective for that side of the work, but it is an electrical cost pushing air through the system. On the administration side, there's not a lot of significant line item changes. We do things like personal protection. As we add staff, we have to incorporate their safety gear. The other thing to recognize is with safety gear is it has a useful life. So, for example, harness for, in the water tower, for height, for, if it's, reaches a certain age, it's deemed unacceptable. It has to be replaced. Or, for example, if you have a hard hat and it actually serves its purpose and you get hit on the head, technically, that should be replaced because it's no longer considered safe. So, things like that are taken into account when we look at personal protective devices. On the IT side, we're renewing licenses. There's a reason why Mark Zuckerberg and Jeff Bezos and these guys are rich, because they get us on the licensing side, and a lot of the money that we're paying is for licenses for associated with our SCADA, with our City Works, and a share of that going to the utility side. So, a lot of that is going to pay for William Shatner's trips into space. But we're also looking at remote access for our user, our staff, that is, so we have to provide them with appropriate iPads and laptops to make sure that we can manage the system. So, that's the cost that we see on the utility side of the operations. On the capital side, we're looking at about two-point-one, two-point-two million dollars of investment in our capital program. Now, the thing to recognize with this capital program is that of that, and you'll see in our budget prep that on page thirty-eight or thirty-nine on the bottom, the proposed utility capital fund for 2022, of the two-point-one eight-five million budget that's being proposed in this utility side, there's one-point-nine-eight million being offset from the Community Building Fund. So, it's primarily the gas tax. So, so there's a, there's some leverage there that we've been able to take advantage of from the, from the programs that we have in place. So, with the utility side, what that means is we've been able to leverage things like the third item on the line, the utility works water pumping station. Phase two of that is the extension of one of the pump stations on the Gondola Point Road. One-point-seven-three million dollars. We've got a priority review being completed. In all likelihood, we'll be looking at lift station number five. We'll be coming back to Council with some recommendations and a timeline and some project updates. Lift station number five is the one down by Sunny Bank on that dead-end stretch of the Gondola Point Road that goes down to the ferry landing. It is the heaviest load pump station that we have in the system on that stretch of the road, and it is, has reached its useful life, and we're holding it together with duct tape and bailing wire and some components of it. So, it is due for replacement, and that part of it is the most significant part of our capital program. The fleet side of things, we're looking at that hoist truck that we've spoken to Council about in the past. If you recall, last year, it was on our agenda, but the deliveries, supply chain pushed us out to this year, and we've, hopefully, by putting it out early, we'll get it in, hopefully, sometime before November of next year. And we're looking at a proposed replacement for a technical van. And that's the piece of equipment that our driver, our operators have, all of the pieces, the repair equipment, computer SCADA equipment, all the stuff for diagnosis, all of the parts for repairing meters, we would put in that van, and that's, it makes it almost like a mobile workshop. That's, that makes it a lot easier to work in the field. So, that's the other item that's being proposed from the fleet side. And again, talking about useful life, our SCADA, the Supervisor Control and Data Acquisition System that manages the wastewater system. We were upgrading the radios. The radios are reaching their useful life and capacities, and we're looking to replace those on both the water and the sewer side. So, that's thirty thousand dollars on the utility side. So, and finally, the last item we've got is the last phase or the finalization of the construction of the utility building that was started last year. The framers are due to be onsite next week to start the wood frame construction. What we've seen, and I think I mentioned to Council at the last meeting, was that the material costs from building construction materials have really impacted this project significantly, more than we expected, and that's an unfortunate side effect that I'm sure most residents who are building new homes have experienced, that twenty to thirty percent increase in projected cost for domestic and residential construction has also translated into that for the construction of the industrial side as well. Most, we're going to be having a fun time finding garage doors for the thing. We're going to be working probably for the first month or so with tarps on the doors because the garage doors are, I think, eighteen weeks' delivery on these doors. So, it's going to be a challenge in itself. So, we're still sourcing alternatives if we can for that particular project. On the water side, the capital is relatively straightforward, as we talked about, is the use of the Community Building Fund for the water distribution expansion on the Old Coach Road and the Hovey Road. It will open up quite a bit of land for development, and, as I touched on a little earlier, help us expand a reliable water system to an institutional user, being Legion Court, should they desire to convert that into their system. So, we're going to take the water right down to the intersection of the Hovey Road. And what that gives us, the capacity to be able to do is also upgrade the street that whole length as well. The other item that is proposed in the capital program is the interior and exterior protective coating of the water tower. Does that work or not? Any of the players should work it, I would imagine. So, the water, the reservoir, Town of Quispam Reservoir, is elevated half-a-million-gallon tank that, what we, what we try to do is ensure that it meets the provincial standards for storage and distribution systems. In doing that, it requires us to do a regular upgrade of the interior and the exterior painting and the protective coverings. So, on the interior side, we're looking at corrosion and cathodic protection. We have to make sure that the coating inside is done properly and it's potable so that it's safe for people for the water to drink. So, it's not just a giant storage tank for the fire trucks. It's actually drinking water in that tank, so it has to be done to a certain standard. On the outside, what we're faced with is the tower is the same rationale with the cuplex roof. It's exposed to the elements. And in doing that, the exposure means that we have to make sure that there's corrosion protection, appropriate type of material that's used in the coating of that tower. We're also looking at slightly changing the paint, and I think if you go to like four, five-hundred, like halfway through, it'll take up the Quispam logo. We're looking at changing the logo and bringing the branding into place. So, the big Quispam in the sky, we'll see, we'll see the new Cuplex, the Quispam system's logo in the sky. So, that's the, that's the water tower project that we're looking at. We're also looking at the variable frequency drives for the water system. If we do, well, the time comes when we're doing the water system, we'll actually have to take the tank out of commission. So, that means we'll be pumping directly from our pumps on the other side of the highway. So, we're going to adjust some of the pumps' drive capacity so that they'll meet the demand, so they're not pumping all the time, full bore, that they can respond to the, to the pressures, and that they can actually fit, you know, gradually pump up, pump down, so they're not sending that massive pressure to the lines, creating some potential for a hammer or water main, water main breakage. And finally, the last capital item is the SCADA system, similar to the wastewater side. It's all integrated into one major side. We've got, but the SCADA is divided in two halves, the water and sewer side, and the radio systems for the SCADA is about twelve thousand dollars that we're looking for that upgrade. That's the, it's always interesting that the, some of the major infrastructure in the town is off, quite often the shortest presentation, but this is the case that we find ourselves with because, as I said earlier, if it's working and you can get the water turned on and the toilet flushed, that's all that people worry about. So, that's the budget as presented and the capital budget, Your Worship.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lozier, and certainly the utility and operating budget are critical to the town running and for people to be able to operate their homes. So, we have some questions here. I'll go to first in the queue, and that would be Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just looking at the, yeah, I mean, just, this is a really big thing for our town, and looking kind of, you know, future, like down the road in terms of our infrastructure, maintaining the infrastructure. And reading this, I don't know, maybe Mr. Lozier or our treasurer can just clarify, we're operating now in a deficit? Like, we actually, you know, have more expenses than what we get in from the town in terms of water?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. So, I guess when I'm looking at some of the rates that we're proposing, and, you know, sometimes when you look at percentages, they're scary because they seem bigger than they are versus when you look at absolute numbers, where, when I look here, it looks like it's an extra cup of coffee every quarter to maybe take a bigger chunk to try and look at future. And I don't know. I mean, you're the expert in terms of all the stuff that needs to be done. So, I'm just wondering, are we charging enough today, knowing all the things that we're going to have to pay for in the future? Like, I just wouldn't want to get to a point where now we have to borrow a bunch of money because we have, no, no one wants issues with utilities. So, like, are we kind of collecting enough and paying enough and doing enough today in terms of our rates to ensure that we're not caught years down the road?
Sure, sure. And the treasurer can add on, but I think what we also look at too is our capacity, like, similar to the debt ratio that you're allowed to carry for the streets, but the operating side, the utility side has a different level of capacity, and we're, we're at those, at or near those levels quite a bit of the time. So, our ability to borrow is a little more constrained, so we have to be a little bit more strategic when it comes to deciding which projects we want to undertake. So, to your point about the rate increases, the other thing is affordability, but it's also comparison of the economy, what's out there. And all of a sudden, that was the biggest issue with the province is that they say, well, just charge what it is. And all of a sudden, if you're charging instead of three-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars for sewer, or what the rate is, you're charging seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars, you're doubling your cost of your sewer, everybody's going to go, like, what for? So, it goes to your point about, well, we're doing this to pay for. So, at this stage of the game, what we're, what we're looking at is the plans that we have in place are setting the stage so that we can do just that, and when the time is right, to recommend a rate increase to that level. At this stage of the game, our debt ratio and our capacity to borrow and our reserves are such that even if the rates were up, you know, we couldn't do anything for a couple of years. So, that's, so it's a strategic decision that the treasurer would advise you on, is when is the time to do that? What are we prepared to do? If we commit to a major water infrastructure program, and we need six million dollars to put a loop of the water line in, bang, that might be the thing. Okay, how do we recoup that? Is it a connection fee? Is it a frontage charge? Is it a user rate? How do you distribute that cost? For us right now, the user rates is a way to equitably distribute the costs of operating the system amongst, across the community. But if the time comes that we have to divide, decide a specific area, that's when you take that chance, and that's her job.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. I'm going to go over to the town treasurer, Ms. Brandon.
Thank you, Your Worship. So, through you to Counselor Luck, when I, I'm going to come up here in a, in a little bit, and I'm going to talk about the sustainability and where we're looking at. So, from my answer to your question, are we putting enough? Are the rates enough? No. Right? But we need to be looking at it on a more long-term. These are, these, these assets have long useful lives, right? Like, so we need to be looking at our utility, I would say, on a hundred-year plan, so that we can make sure that we have sustainability of rates while not having the spikes up and down where we can more slowly streamline the rates. So, I'll go into some more detail when I come up to wrap things up.
Thank you, Ms. Brandon. I'm going to, next in the queue, Counselor Olson.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Lozier, the water that we've, we're having a small, well, half-a-million-dollar expansion down the Old Coach Road, is there any plans in the foreseeable future to expand further down the Hampton Road towards, towards Peddingill and then up Peddingill?
Your Worship, yes, there are plans. But we are also linking those operational plans with development plans. We've been approached by a couple of development proposals that were, that are still on the back burner, that they're sort of watering and seeing if they come to any sort of fruition. So, we're waiting to see what type of demand comes in place first. But the next phase of development of our water system in accordance with the plan that CBCL put together for us is to continue the water on the Hampton Road somewheres down into the area around Donlin Drive, then create a loop across, say, for example, the Recede Ridge, so that we can get the Millennium Loop in place. And that makes it an easier maintained and a better quality water system. But, but the first, the first steps of those is going to be taking it down the Hampton Road, and that's going to be, as I said, a function of, there's a potential development that, that we're hearing in the wind, so we're sitting on it for a little bit. The Designated Highway Program that the province has in place here will impact the timing on that. And if you recall, the Designated Highway Program does require the town, if we want to expedite it almost to us, to contribute to their Designated Highway Construction Program. So, we have to be prepared to do that. And thirdly, it also goes back to some of our earlier discussions about the act of transportation. One of the items that we've identified is, is when the time comes when we do the Hampton Road reconstruction, that is the time to widen it out, push some sidewalks back a little bit, incorporate the lanes that we want to see on the Hampton Road, knowing that we're going to dig it up once, and let's dig it up and do it properly at that time. So, it's a three-part puzzle for the water system up here. But it is in our, it is in the, in the short term. I would imagine in less than five years, we'll be digging up the stretch of the road to put water here, if not to two years.
At the same time that we put in the major trunks, do we put in the lateral feeds to the individual potential users?
They're capped off at the lines, at the, at the property lines.
Right.
And, and in the past, what we've done is given any of the residential properties the opportunity to connect, and we waived inspection fees or permit fees or whatever it might be at the time to encourage them. So, some type of an encouragement. Usually, we take that to Council in advance as part of the project and decide, say, in order to encourage connection, we would like to do this as part of the program, and Council is aware, we're going to do any type of incentives to that. But, but in, for all intents and purposes, our goal is to have any, any properties that are, exist, or that we know that we're going to be developed in the short term. We'll try to get a supply line to that.
So, when, when did you say that that would be possibly looked at?
I would be surprised if we're not starting on the water main on the, I would be coming back to Council for 2024 water main extension on the Hampton Road. I'd be, I'd be shocked if I wasn't here in front of you in two years' time, looking for money for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. Going next in the queue, we have Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you, Your Worship. Mr. Lozier, I always struggle with the, the cost of extending the water and the number of users that'll actually connect on, because obviously, the, what we charge for water rates and what the revenue coming in will not touch nearly what it's going to cost us to put that infrastructure in. So, I always wonder, are we best to maybe be looking at extending our sewer lines versus water lines? Is that more cost-effective for us as a town? I know there are two, it's like apples and oranges, one, the water and the sewage, but I just look at it to get the I, I just look at it to get the best buck for, bang for a dollar, like, if it's a half a million dollars to put it in and we're gonna generate a revenue, I, I don't know, a hundred thousand dollars coming back into our coffers, that's a lot of money in infrastructure. It'll take years and years to recoup that money. Uh, so that's my question to you. Is it better to use that money, say, on the sewer system and say, okay, we've got all sorts of areas within Quispam that are still on sewage, are still on septic, and they should be able to hook onto the sewer system? I just wanted to get your thoughts on that.
The, the thing, the, 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 the thing to recognize is, um, by expanding the sewer system, then you have the capacity to increase density. So if you run a sewer line out to a septic serviced property, that should be one acre, all of a sudden, if you've got a sewer line through there, they can actually connect to it and drop that to a half an acre size. So now you have the multi-use of a drilled well can still be on a half acre lot. So now you can increase density. So it's ea- it is easier to increase density with this expansion of the sewer system, yes. What the water system gives you is that security of a cat pot, potable system, recognizing the fact that people don't regularly test their wells. People probably buy their, well, they buy their house and they test a well, and then they never test it again. You've got the, the, the decision whether we're expanding the water system for fire protection. That's the other thing that, that the benefit that you have is when you send a water system into a subdivision, potentially the insurance rates will drop when they look at the, the ability to connect to the, to a, to a water system for the fire system. So the decisions that you have to make are, are dependent on what's driving the, that, that component of it for us. For us, the, uh, the biggest drawbacks is, is similar to the act of transportation is the, the geography. If we wanted to expand for a lot of our, our sewer system now, we're into an area where it's not just a sewer line, it's a pumping station to get the wa- the sewer back to our treatment facility. So that, that cost, all of a sudden, will double and, and it increases on a, on a, on a, a regular basis, because now you've got just the infrastructure cost, but the ongoing maintenance cost. Whereas a water system is not gravity sus- as, as gravity susceptible. You can put a water line out, it's got the proper depth, and you keep that depth and you get the pressure. As long as you can maintain pressures, you're fine. So it's, it's a, it's a, it's a toss-up. What are you trying to service? Um, a lot of communities are going to municipal water system for that, for the security concern. You know, they've hit a groundwater issue or, or whatever it might be. For us, in a few locations, we had to introduce the water system because the province changed the standards of what is considered potable water. If you remember back in the day, it was, uh, your, your bacteria count was a ten-ten count, it was acceptable water, and your uranium was, uh, fifty parts per million, now it's down to ten. It was zero-zero on your, on your bacteria counts. So people couldn't meet that. And they could before, but it was backdoored in, so we had to extend the water system to some areas. So it depends on what's your motivating factor. But as far as, if your, your goal is to increase density, it's, it's more easily achieved with the extension to the sewer system, but it could be costly.
Thank you for that explanation, 'cause I was just thinking about, um, the new sewer system on the corner of the Model Farm Road and, um, oh, what's that corner called? But as, as you're going out towards Model Farm Road, we built a new pumping station. That's a pumping station, isn't it?
Corner of Model Farm and Hampton Road, right by the train bridge?
So I was wondering about the extension of that sewer line going up the Model Farm Road. Would that not give us more value, value and density than?
If you drive them, if you drive the Model Farm Road, and then the first curve you get to, and then you go down into that intersection with the Means Cove Road, so now you're below the pump station, so now you need another pump station at that location to get it to your next. So the gravity, the, the, the ability to put gravity in might take you to the, the first corner, and that's it. So you would have maybe two hundred meters of development in there, and all of a sudden, you're, we're into that, we're not getting a great return on our investment for, for that type of thing.
Okay, thank you. Um, and my other question has to do with, um, um, we talked about the electricity that's used at the sewage lagoon. So have there ever been any discussions, maybe with NB Power, of doing any type of pilot project there with, um, solar panels? Correct, thank you. Um, and, you know, because we are partners with the, um, the climate change, and I thought maybe there's, would be an opportunity for us to do some partnership with NB Power there.
Uh, it's, you, you're almost like you're a straight man, a straight, straight woman, I guess, straight person. Um, that, yeah, that's a program that we've already got in place now. Um, we've, we've counseled, previous council has authorized staff to look at a pilot program for some type of a solar farm at the lagoon facility. Um, our initial investigations, and we're working with a local company, Smart Energy, that, you know, the Quispam, they're a Quispam company, and they're actually considered an expert in the province in a Brunswick firm when it comes to solar panels, and we're working with them on a, on a pilot for, uh, solar generation. And, and the province, uh, or NB Power has an embedded generation program that they can distribute to large-scale customers, but it's fully subscribed. So that means there's no other communities that are eligible to partake in it. And what that means, what we're looking to do is, if we have a three-acre solar array at the lagoon facility, we in theory can offset, we've already done the calculations, we can offset all of the electrical demand for all of our utility system. But because our system is spread out throughout the community, we've got twelve pump stations and two treatment facilities, we can't take that electricity from the solar panels and give it directly to those facilities. We actually have to put it back into the network and get the credit and work, work backwards that way. So, but that program with NB Power is subscribed. So, so the only thing that they have available at the moment is a net metering. It's a hundred kilowatt hour max, so that would be something like somebody's home if you put a solar panel in your house, and then you could feed back to your own meter and they would backcharge you accordingly. We, we, we would generate significantly more than that at any of our facilities, and so it's, 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 um, it's, it's not a, it's a short-term type of a pilot that really wouldn't serve any purpose. So we're working with, with, uh, the, uh, the, on the pilot. What we'll likely try to get in, in the next little while is a, uh, sample solar panel down at the lagoon to, to ma- monitor what level of energy we can produce, based on its orientation and the type of panel that we choose. And then, then give us, that gives us the ability to, to multiply, 'cause they're, 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 they're compartmentalized, so you can say, if I've got a two-pack panel, I need forty two-pack panels, so we can, it's actually, it's a linear calculation, so we know exactly what we need to offset our power demand. So it is a program that we're, we're, we're looking at.
Thank you, deputy mayor Schreier. Are there any other questions for Mr. Loji on this topic? Mr. Loji, don't see any more?
Great. My, my last touch, and, and, and I, I touched at the start of my presentation with regards to being the asset management champion for the town. Um, and, and that doesn't mean I arm wrestled everybody, 'cause I know Dana can take me in an arm wrestling match, but, um, it means that I've been designated as the, as the, as the staff member that makes sure that any of our decisions or initiatives under the asset management program are consistent and that we follow the same approach. To councillor Luck's comment about our, our strategy and our, our policies, our initial steps are on the town's website. And what we wanna make sure is that any future, uh, initiatives that we undertake, we try to package that back to council so that you recognize that things that we're requesting or that we're asking for are consistent with that. So, uh, just to, so to give everyone an overview, when we look at the focuses that we have for the programs over the next little while, is, is not just to establish the, the standard operation procedures and, and our, and our, and our, um, use of our Q and one and our, our city work system, but we wanna also make sure that we continue with the next phases of our asset management. Um, and, and what that means is, we know, we, we wanna know what we've got, we wanna make sure we take that inventory, we wanna make sure, we wanna establish levels of service. When I speak to levels of service, the next thing that US council members will come, be coming before you is the, is the street level of service. We had the preliminary drawing, uh, preliminary plans presented to you a few months ago, where we looked at a ten-year, um, pro- projection. If we wanted to keep a certain, uh, status for our streets, what type of investment in the streets do we have to make every year? And we'll have some final recommendations and some, some planning for you as a result of that over the next coming weeks. Uh, the community services department will be looking at that same thing, um, when it comes to the template that we're using for the Qplex facility, and not, not the Qplex facility proper, but all of the facilities surrounding it. So we'll be, we're, we're in the process of developing a level of service program for things like the pickleball courts, the tennis courts, the trails, the, the, all those, that network to help staff and, and council make the plans for the future. So when we continue with that, uh, uh, next phases of asset management, you know, we wanna decide, what do we have, where is it? You know, what kind of shape is in it? Is it working well? Should, when should it be replaced? When should it be repaired? Those types of decisions really help us to plan, uh, uh, not just operationally, but financially, what we should be doing over the next little while. It all boils down to what are we trying to achieve is, is a level of service that is acceptable to US council members that we want to deliver to our residents. And that could be something as simple as saying, in the streets inventory program, we're okay if the plows take five hours to do a, to do a circuit, to do a route. And in doing that, we may not need to buy another plow for five years. We may not have to increase our routes for five years. Or you may say to us, you know what, more people are commuting, we think it's important, we want plows on the streets and have a street network completed in three hours. We can come to you and say, oh, that means we need one more plow, one more staff, whatever. So the levels of service decisions that you, you have are, are gonna be tied directly to the asset management plan that we have from a community services department perspective, uh, even as something as simple as saying, how often are the dressing rooms cleaned in the Qplex? If you think, well, we can live with them being cleaned every other time, well, that makes it a little easier for the director and our staff to decide, okay, this is how much people, how many people I need. Or is it saying, we want to make sure that the tennis courts are serviced, swept, whatever. Okay, well, they've never been swept, but we can sweep them to make sure that, you know, people don't trip, fall, whatever it is. So those are the types of decisions that will be coming to you over the next little while. I touched on a little bit, is the, the one document is, is under general governance, it's a forty thousand dollar fleet study, a fleet analysis. In the fleet analysis, what we're proposing to do is, is to make sure that we look at the overall condition of the fleet. Previous councils have, have had, how would I say, issues whenever the staff comes to, to them and say, we need a new vehicle. Always the question is, do you really need it? Should it be replaced? Who's driving it? Why do we need it? All the questions, very valid questions. But, but what we wanna do is, when we introduce a, a fleet review and a, and a program, we wanna delve a little bit deeper. Is, is it, is it the condition appropriate? Is the allocation appropriate? Is there, is there a recognized cycle that you can plan for? And, and in doing that, then you have a defined component of your budget already identified. You know that every other year, I've got three hundred and forty thousand dollars that's coming in front of you for a snowplow. That's taken right off the table, and we don't have to talk about it. Theoretically, we wouldn't have to talk about it ever again, because it's planned and it's recognized. We look at things like, um, grants for the asset management program, where we would be looking at, um, um, things like, uh, under the fleet study, uh, alternative fuels. We touched a little bit earlier about, uh, electronic vehicles and EVs. We, we've, we've, we ran a pilot, a six-month pilot on propane-powered fuels. So things like that, we would be looking at under the asset, um, asset management and the fleet review. So that's being proposed under the general governance, uh, capacity. And, and, and again, finally, on that, that side of things with the FCM, we always wanna be able to identify potential grants for us. Um, if, if we're having the best resources for our community. One example is, um, we're levered, trying to leverage uh, with the Canadian Society of Civil Engineers, they're doing a, a pilot program for small municipalities to, who are implementing condition assessments for their asset management, and I've sort of wedged a foot in there, and we may be eligible for a grant that they'll help us with a infrastructure assessment for a wastewater program, a wastewater facility. So we'll see where that takes us over a little while. It may be a, a no-cost exercise for us that'll help us. So, so we always wanna make sure that we're building staff and town capacity by looking for these avenues. And, and so it's just not staff that plays a role. Council really has a significant role in, in determining that strategic vision, and we've talked about it, and, and you have that exercise coming forward in the next little while, and our CAO is gonna be speaking to you that over the next little while as well. So that means that you are being prepared to adopt all the policies and give us the strategic vision, things like the master transportation plan that we're undertaking, the, the recreation plan that the trajectory community services is being asked for. Things that I had mentioned a little earlier, but that I will be coming back to you before, for, for things. So what that does is it makes sure that we can achieve all these goals by making sure that we have the resources to accomplish the goals. And that's the purposes of overall of your asset management plans and determining your levels of service. Um, essentially, that's, that's my presentation for council on all the fronts. Uh, if you have any questions pertaining to the asset management side of things, or any of the other previous, uh, items, I am still here. And I'm around, if you think of something in your sleep, and email me the question anytime.
Mr. Loji, we have a couple of questions here.
Perfect.
And first in line is deputy mayor Schreier.
Thank you, Mr. Loji. The asset management plan, so, um, does that go into tenders as well? I'm thinking, are we able to, with that plan, um, able to dovetail into any other tenders that may be going out?
You're talking like a purchasing policy?
Yes.
So, so there are, we, we do have a purchasing policy that's reviewed regularly. I know that we are trying to, uh, leverage, um, regional purchasing for a lot of items. Um, we, the treasurer and, and her, and her staff are looking at that on a regular basis. Um, we actually tried to leverage our wheeled excavator purchase. There's a clause in the city St. John's tender that, that regional communities could piggyback on it. So, so there, there are mechanisms in place for that now. Um, there's also a provincial pricing that we can piggyback on for some, some particular products, computers, uh, IT services or IT products, things of that nature. So yes, those are definitely programs, but they're purchasing, not necessarily asset management.
Okay, thank you. It's just, when I was on the, um, union of municipalities call, they, they talked about their new procurement program that all municipalities were able to dovetail into.
Yep.
I think the name was Canoe.
Yep.
And so I'm just wondering if we were taking advantage of that to anyway. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Brandon.
Sure. I did wanna say that, yes, that's, uh, it's an item that I was speaking with, um, our procurement coordinator yesterday. We've been looking at it, we're diving deeper, um, once I get out of being submerged in the budget process, then I can pop back up again and, and tackle some of those, but, but canoe is definitely something that we're looking at to try and, um, implement, so, yep. Yep.
Thank you. Okay, and councillor Luck?
Thank you, your worship. Um, I did have one quick question about the asset management plan, or maybe it's more of a comment, 'cause I don't expect an answer back today. Um, from just reading through it, and again, an asset management plan is something that I'm newer to, but it looked like we identified the level of service statements and then customer performance measures. And one of the things I was happy to see is, under the level of service statements, we did have provided cycling infrastructure, i.e. shared routes, signage, et cetera. But under the customer performance measures, we have to be determined. And then, when you look down into the actual, and this was kind of in the body of the, um, asset management plan, then when you get to the appendix, where they start to kind of get into the nitty-gritty of specifics, that line was completely gone. So I don't know if you can speak to it now, I just don't want it to be lost, 'cause I think in terms of looking at long-term, as we spoke earlier, about kind of thinking bigger and a bit more visionary around how things are gonna change.
Definitely.
Um, I just wouldn't want that to be lost when we're looking long-term.
No, uh, and, and if you, if you, uh, in reading those, you can see those are all general statements, or the initial policy statements, and those are commitments that the town wants to make. So the specifics and the particulars then get broken down, so what we're talking like a fleet pan- uh, fleet policy, a fleet, um, assessment. If we could do an asset, uh, management for the, uh, network with our master transportation plan, that then feeds into here are the networks. So what, what it is essentially is, once we decide what we wanna do, we commit to it and we incorporate that into the asset management plan, so. So it's, it's, the, the, the initial documents was a template, we populate it, 'cause there's a pile of stuff that we, we didn't put in the, in the, the asset management, the, the statements, and the policy statements for council, because it was, two things, it was, we, we, we met the conditions to, in order to meet our grant criteria, but what it did is it gives us the template, how to add more if we want. So it's, it is there as a tool to expand upon, definitely.
Thank you, councillor Luck. Any further, councillor Luck? Thank you. Mr. Loji, thank you. We now have, uh, the acting CAO, Mr. Kennedy, with the proposed twenty twenty-two budgets from external ser- sources, regional services.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, good afternoon. It was morning when we last spoke. Um, I lauded our, uh, director of community services and director of engineering and works this morning, so I'm gonna throw a few plaudits now toward our town treasurer, Krista Brandon. Uh, when you look at this document, which is fifty-five pages long, which is also on our website for public perusal, um, there's an awful lot of information there, and there's obviously an awful lot of time, effort, blood, sweat, and tears before in order to make this consumable by the public, by our council, by our staff as well, so um, this doesn't happen overnight, and I just wanted to make reference to Krista and her team. They are a small but mighty team, and they do a great job, and um, if council accepts this budget and moves forward today to, uh, a final approval in November for what will make us a, a twenty-eight million dollar corporation, so. External sources, uh, I did mention this morning about, um, our internal sources and sort of explained uh, the changes that are being made there, which was a one-point-two-five percent increase. The external sources are a little bit more challenging when we get to this stage of the budget process, um, because seven items on that screen that you see before you, five of which are regional in nature, and that's fire, police, the library, envision St. John, and, uh, the regional service. Are regional in nature and that's fire, police, the library, Envision St. John and, uh, the regional services that fall under that category. And then the COMEX. So it's not to say that council can't make changes at this stage to those budgets. But staff's recommendation is that you don't, simply because a lot of dominoes fall at this stage. Because of the regional nature of a lot of those, um, budgets with our neighbors in Rossay. Um, and that if they were to say no, it would have a dramatic impact on us and conversely, if we were to say no, it would have a dramatic. Impact on them as well. So just to go through these fairly quickly, um, Envision St. John, as I mentioned this morning, the Regional Growth Agency is. Is really regional cooperation, collaboration at its best. Um, the provincial government is looking at us as a potential model for the rest of the province. Hampton is actually a part of this Regional Growth Agency, they were not a part of the previous iterations, Discover St. John or. Um, Economic Development, Greater St. John Hampton was not part of that. But at the request slash urging of the provincial government, they, uh, they joined and they are very happy to be a part of this new agency. You can see exponential growth in this, up to four hundred and fifty-four thousand in twenty twenty-five. And again, this is part of our commitment to the region, um, and it's certainly more than what we were contributing to. The former enterprise, Greater St. John, we had a, a three thousand dollar stipend that we, uh, contributed to. Discover St. John on an annual basis, but obviously the costs are growing up. But we anticipate and are optimistic that those costs are going to be returned to the communities, uh, in spades when the time comes. Uh, regional services and facilities, that is not a typo on the left, the Regional Services Commission has increased, uh, its budget, our share. By one Canadian tunny, there are no more two dollar bills, so it's an actual tunny, but, uh, that's not a typo, that is what the increase is, two dollars. Uh, and there is a decrease that you see of fifty-three thousand dollars through the Regional Facilities Commission. And of course, those are, um, I'm sure everyone knows the five facilities that have been mandated by the provincial government since. Uh, the late nineteen nineties and, um, we have contributed multi-million dollars towards those initiatives. Um, and we've done that gladly, might not be the best, uh, adverb, but we've done it, um, knowing that. They are important from a regional perspective and that's certainly our residents use. TD Station, the Imperial Theater, the St. John Arts Center, the Canada Games Aquatic Center and the Trade and Convention Center, so, um, pardon? Well, yes, they do pay to use those for sure, and I think that was part of the reason, if you look back through the, the annals of history, why. Um, the provincial government mandated this and made it law was to prevent, um. Certain municipality or any municipality from saying, we don't want to do that anymore, so. Uh, I think it was councillor Bigger who mentioned that at council on Tuesday night, that, yeah, it would take an awful lot of effort to, to move on from that, so. Um, those numbers actually this year, as you can see, have gone down. Uh, so now is where we get into the, uh, protective services, the, the guns and hoses, as Director Loge mentioned earlier today. Uh, we'll start with the guns and that's the Police Protective Service, their budget, uh, is increasing our share of seven point two five percent. Uh, to four point five million. This has been vetted, obviously, by the Police Board and our elected members of that are councillor Luck and Mayor O'Hara. And it has also gone through the Joint Finance Committee, which is comprised of four elected officials. From, uh, Quis Pam SIS and four from Rossay and, uh, along with the professional staff that are there to provide support. Our four members of that committee are the mayor, the deputy mayor, uh, councillor Miller and councillor Thompson. So when you take that into consideration, that we have four people on the, uh, Joint Finance Committee. And then we have an additional councillor, councillor Luck on the Police Commission and councillor Bigger on the Fire Board. You could argue that in essence, we already have a majority of council that are in support of these. Of these particular budgets and I think that's done by design to ensure, as I mentioned earlier, when we get to this stage and when Rossay gets to this stage, that. The changes aren't made to those budgets because of the impact that it has on everybody and they have been, you know, properly vetted. Um, with the police and fire chief, um, appearing before, you know, the Joint Finance Committee. Uh, I can tell you as well that the, uh, the Joint Finance Committee, uh, sent, uh, myself and my colleague, Mr. Jarvey from Rossay. To meet with the now former chief and the chair of the Police Commission. Um, after their initial meeting to see if the budget could be pared back slightly. We were probably looking for a, a greater pair back than what it was, but, um. The chief, the former chief came back and said, this is the money that he needs and these are the reasons as to why he needs it. And the most notable change in the budget that really reflects the increase is the introduction of four additional officers. Which is basically because, um, obviously the police business is a twenty-four seven operation and they have four platoons. Um, and they're looking to add an additional officer to each platoon, so it wasn't. Um, well, can we do three, can we do two, can we do one, it was basically from the former chief's perspective. Uh, four or none, actually, from the former chief's perspective, it was four, there weren't any options, so. Um, ultimately, uh, the Joint Finance Committee is recommending that that budget move forward, um, to this stage and that's where we are today. From the hoses perspective, uh, our folks at the, uh, Canada cases Valley Fire Department. There is a very slight decrease in the Quis Pam SIS portion of their budget. Of nine hundred and fifty-four dollars on a three point four million dollar budget. Um, that small decrease is because we are using reserve funds and borrowing a fifteen year debenture on fire station number two. Um, paying back approximately seventy-five thousand dollars a year. And of course, as, uh, everyone knows, uh, Fire Station Two, as, as James Mullinger would say, is where the Civic Center used to be. Uh, that building has been sold to the Fire Board and that is no longer a municipal facility. Uh, for the town of Quis Pam SIS, so that will become a, a full fledged, uh, fire station. And certainly they're doing a lot of work and will be doing a lot of work in the, uh, upstairs area to, um, make that more suitable. Um, for the needs of the fire department. Canada cases Public Library is the other, uh, regional facility that we have with the town of Rossay and there is a decrease to their budget as well of. Four point six two percent, that's about seventy-five hundred dollars on a budget of just over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, our library is a success story, it's one of the biggest, uh, one of the busiest in the province. And certainly we get a, a standing return on our municipal investment into the library. Waste management is always, uh, something that's top of mind, a number of years ago. Quis Pam SIS, uh, contracted garbage in the past, for those of you who have been here for quite some time, recall that. Garbage used to be paid for privately by a residential homeowner, there were two competing, um, garbage collectors. I didn't know that when I first moved to Quis Pam SIS, but I chose the much more expensive one, never quite understood why I would have done that, but didn't do much, uh, research in advance. Um, and I didn't seem to think that the people that were paying less got any, uh, different level of service, you put your garbage at the end of the driveway. And they come and take it away, uh, in those days it was once a week, now of course it's once every two weeks with compost and recycling in the, uh, off weeks as well, so. Uh, there is an increase of seven point three two percent, which is, uh, equates to just over eighty-one thousand dollars. Thirty-nine thousand of that, um, almost half is, uh, an increase to the tipping fees. Through the Fundy Regional Service Commission and there has not been an increase in tipping fees since two thousand and three, so. First time increase there, so that, uh, does go up somewhat. COMEX sees a dramatic decrease in the budget for twenty twenty-two. Fifty percent decrease down to seventy-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and that's because. Uh, we have merged routes fifty-two and fifty-three into one route, um, basically removed. Uh, the COMEX service, uh, beyond the Qplex on the Vincent Road heading toward, uh, the town of Rossay, so now the, uh, COMEX. Uh, begins at Parkside, uh, road in the morning, heads down to the Qplex and then comes back up the arterial, turns right on the Hampton Road. And then goes into King Square, uh, along the Hampton Road and then through the Rossay Road, uh, before meeting up with Highway One and then continuing on. A naysayer or a detractor would look at that and say, this is just the next step toward, uh, cutting the service completely. Uh, that would be a valid complaint and concern if only it were true, which it is not. It's actually quite the opposite, if you look back over the years, that, uh, this town has made a tremendous, uh, commitment. Um, an emotional commitment, I think, and a financial investment to COMEX, we are anxious and eager to see it continue and succeed. Uh, beginning a week from Monday on November first, uh, the COMEX is going to be free to all riders. Uh, until the end of twenty twenty-one, so two full months, we're anxious to see, uh, how that works. And again, there is no sinister ulterior motive, we're not going to come back after the fact and say, well, the bus was free and still nobody took it, that's not what we're trying to do here. Our Climate Change Committee in Quis Pam SIS is the envy of not only the province, but of, uh, the nation. Our clerk is fielding calls and emails all the time from, uh, various municipalities and municipal organizations that want to hear. About our climate change, uh, initiatives and endeavors. Uh, in fact, the mayor and councillor Olson, who chairs that committee, are, uh, fielding another national interview, uh, next week. And part of our climate change goals and initiatives involving, uh, reducing greenhouse gas emissions and getting fewer vehicles on the road. And in order to accomplish that, we want to keep the COMEX running, so, um, don't let the naysayers get you down. Um, obviously there is a dramatic decrease and that number is there, but, uh, again, for anyone to say that this is the, the next step toward eliminating the COMEX. Uh, that just simply is not true. Uh, civic relations, uh, sponsorships and grants, uh, council approved that in principle on Tuesday night. And that's a decrease of forty-nine hundred dollars compared to twenty twenty-one. Uh, I did mention this, uh, this morning, Krista. I did mention this morning about the, uh. Our situation involving Riverview and Rossay, which is the next slide, so I'll go to that and, uh. Unequal equalization, which we've been talking about for quite some time, I don't need to rehash that, but there are the numbers, um. In actual print on your screen, um, the equalization funding Riverview, which took about a million point one, uh, drop this year, but they're still at one point two million. And as you can see, Quis Pam SIS and Rossay are at zero. And then just in terms of how we stack up with the tax rate that, uh, staff has put before you today, uh, of one point three one six three for twenty twenty-two. Um, and again, it is much less, much less than areas of, uh. Similar population within the province of New Brunswick, um, most notably. Riverview is not the only other non-city in that group of five and they're at one point five nine two six. I anticipate that their number will be coming down as well, uh, this year due to increased assessments, but. Um, I think generally speaking, and again, you have to consider the overall tax burden that, uh, our residents have, but. When you look at the tax rate itself, we certainly, uh, we rate quite well, especially when you consider the, the services that we provide to our citizens on a daily basis. So what does this all mean? The treasurer will guide you through that unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, we, we do have a question here. Uh, councillor Luck?
Thank you, your worship, can you just, um, on the police, the fire, uh, the library, you have these blue arrows. And I, can you just tell me what those numbers refer to?
The arrows that are going up?
Well, there's ones that are going up and down and there's percentages and stuff?
That's the increase in the budget for twenty twenty-two over twenty twenty-one.
Okay, I guess like I'm, and maybe it's just, I'm confused, so on the police one, for example. I thought it was an eight point three eight eight percent increase, but then in the blue, so it's not? Like I thought we actually, it looks like we gave them the money that they asked for and they're saying that it's an eight point three eight eight percent increase on the right hand side. Okay, so that's the difference.
There is something with the police budget that the treasurer will explain.
Oh, okay. Oh, is that, is that what it is?
No, there's something else that the treasurer can explain.
Anyway, if someone could clarify that, that would be great, thank you.
Okay, we'll wait until, uh, Ms. Brandon comes up. Uh, councillor Miller, did you want to wait for Ms. Brandon or did you have, uh, question, okay?
Thank you, your worship, uh, actually, uh, i- it's more of a, a comment, I just want to make about the equalization, not that we can change it. But ironically, because this has been going on for a long time. Uh, ironically, the mathematical formula that they use, it has to do on how your growth is and everything else, so. And we're supposed to share a pot of two point three million dollars. So ironically, this is the year where we actually had the lowest growth of everybody, we had an eight percent, Rossay had a nine percent, Riverview had an eleven, so. In theory, that two point three, we might actually get a bit. We got zero, Rossay got zero and Riverview lost one point one million. So one point one million disappeared from our pot of shared, which, you know. I tried to go through, but all of a sudden they said they were going to change it, well, they did change it. But this was the year that we actually might have got some money, if you look at the formula, because we actually grew the least amount of the two we're compared against. And Riverview lost the one point one, which theoretically should have been split between Rossay and Quis Pam.
Where'd the money go?
Follow the money, thank you.
Thank you councillor Miller, uh, and Deputy Mayor Schreier, did you want to ask Mr. Kennedy a question or Ms. Brandon?
Uh, my question has to do with COMEX. Just so that I totally understand, if any of that money that we, um, it's not being used on COMEX this year. Could that money be diverted into, uh, in-town transportation system for the town of Quis Pam SIS, say for the summer months? To allow people to get to, uh, programs at the beaches, at the library, like, has there ever been any discussions on that type of. Transportation system within our town?
Through you, your worship, there, there have been, um, I guess the only way that that money would not go toward COMEX itself. Is if we were to eliminate the COMEX run, which is, I don't think something that anyone around this table wants to even ponder. Um, the city is soon to, um, move forward with a pilot project. To call it an Uber bus is probably a little cheeky, but it's that sort of thing where, uh, you might be able to contact the bus through an app and say. I'm at Parkside, come pick me up and, uh, they're considering expanding that not just within the city proper, but to include the COMEX stops as well. It wouldn't come to your house, but it would come to an actual bus stop and take you to King Square. So those are things that we're exploring, again, um. COMEX is, I think, near and dear to everyone's heart around this council table and certainly it is, um, to the residents who use it. And I know, uh, her worship has taken the bus a few times when we've done different promotional, uh, activities, which we are going to be doing. Um, in November, when we start the, uh, two months of free fairs. Um, our partners at the local radio station will be doing, uh, cut-ins, as they call it in the radio lingo. Um, on the bus live and that usually generates some excitement and we usually take some swag as well, so that gets people excited, but. We've told those people and I know the, the mayor has as well, over the last number of times that we've done that, that. When they say, we love the bus, well, you need to convince two or three of your friends to love the bus just as much as well, because obviously that would make the numbers. Um, extremely feasible, so, uh, I, I think for now, that particular number, that seventy-five thousand dollar range would be. Designed for the COMEX and if something were to happen, which I don't foresee, then that money could be reallocated to something else.
Hey, I, I think I, um, have the answer to my question, I, it just, the money that we were putting in before the reduction.
The additional money.
The, the additional money, um, that's where I was sort of, that gap. If, if we could use that money somewhere else within our community. Or whether that money is strictly attached to COMEX and that's a, an agreement that we've signed, I, I'm not familiar with the agreement, so.
So the money that was in the budget for twenty twenty-one under COMEX, that hundred and fifty thousand range. Is not in the budget for twenty twenty-two, so that money is not there. Um, the new number is the seventy-five thousand dollar range, so that other money is worked its way into the budget in another manner. If council wanted to add seventy-five thousand dollars to the budget, obviously that would have tax rate implications, but that's certainly council's prerogative to do that, but that money is just. No longer in the COMEX budget.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, I think that's all, Mr. Miller, or councillor Millard, no, okay. Thank you, so we'll hear from, uh, our treasurer, Ms. Brandon. Welcome back.
Thank you. So just before I, I start, I'll go through the, the police, um, piece. So when the police department submitted their budget, uh, for twenty twenty-two. They compared it against their twenty twenty-one budget that did not include their extraneous costs. they compared it against their two thousand and twenty one budget that did not include their extraneous costs. So there was additional costs on top of the six point nine million that was reflected in our two thousand and twenty one budget. We actually budgeted for that money. So that was already sitting in our pot of money for the police. So when they submitted their budget request of the seven point five million, showing the eight point three eight eight percent, we already had more than what they were comparing it against to in two thousand and twenty one. So yes, their budget is at eight point three eight eight percent. So we budgeted for that extraneous cost. That was already included in our tax rate. It was already budgeted for. So when we then go and recalculate this now, we already had money already starting in our budget, thereby reducing what our percentage increase is. So our proportionate share has has changed, so it's now fifty nine point nine five percent. I believe it was fifty nine point nine two in two thousand and twenty one. So our proportionate share of the total budget has increased. But because we already had money in our budget set aside for those extraneous costs, our percentage is lower. Rossay did not budget for those, so they would then show the eight point three eight eight. We always try to budget as accurately and as as we need to, to make sure we've got all of the funds, so that's why we're showing this decrease. The absolute number is still the seven point five eight percent. We've got our fifty nine point nine five percent of that is the four nine, the four point five nine. The seven point two five percent is against what our two thousand and twenty one budget number was. Does that clarify a lot of confusion? That's numbers. So if you can just, or I guess I could. So you've heard from us a lot so far, starting this morning. Well, it's this afternoon. So what does this all mean? So, good afternoon, your worship, deputy mayor, councillors, staff, and those watching online. Hello. So my role as treasurer of the town of Quis Pam Sis is to ensure all funds that we receive and all expenses that we pay are accurately recorded. So we know that these are taxpayer dollars. And as an organization, we strive to be excellent stewards of this, these funds. Many of us are also taxpayers within the town or within the region. So our staff started working on this budget early this summer. And what you've seen today is a compilation of a lot of hard work and effort. So this is my fourth budget presentation with the town. So some of you may remember that it is my favorite time of the year. I'm a planner by nature, so budgeting is my gem. So this is a full team effort. And I want to thank our finance committee, my fellow executive team members, my staff for all their support and assistance, especially Nancy Young and Leah Estey, who really helped pull this budget together for you all. All members of our management team for all their effort and commitment, and to everyone who works for the town of Quis Pam Sis for their hard work and dedication. So when we presented the draft budget to the finance committee, we hadn't yet received our tax base information. And we had to make some assumptions and some estimates. The draft budget that we presented originally had the tax rate remaining the same. And the tax base, we had estimated it to increase by five percent. During that meeting, or right at the end of that meeting, there was a news flash and we got our tax assessment base. So since that point, we've then taken this budget back and reworked it. So as our acting CAO has indicated, this proposed budget now has the tax rate decreasing by two point six five cents to one point three one six three. And at the end of my presentation, and before you start any sort of debate, I will run you through all the detailed changes that we have made to the budget to get us to where we are today. So let's start by reviewing the general fund budget. So this is a budget that seeks to balance a variety of different priorities in very challenging times. And you've heard both of our directors say this a few times throughout their presentations. We want to continue to provide the level of service that our council and our residents expect, while taking into consideration our economic environment. The total budget is just over twenty eight million dollars, an increase over two thousand and twenty one of one point eight million dollars or seven point zero two percent. Our tax base increased by nine point zero six percent. And you will hear different numbers presented throughout this, but our tax base for municipal tax calculation is based on the original two thousand and twenty one assessment of the one point eight billion dollars. So when I say nine point zero six, that is what I'm comparing against. With our revenue now then exceeding our expenditures, this allows us to recommend reducing the tax rate by the two point six five cents. So what does this mean for taxpayers? So the average house price in Quis Pam Sis for two thousand and twenty two is estimated to be two hundred and eighty one thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars. So we calculate the average home price using our GIS system and the assessment list received from Service New Brunswick. The list we currently have is not one hundred percent complete. There are always some properties that won't make it into the assessment tax base for each year. There are also always changes, reassessments, properties added throughout the year, but our tax base stays the same for the entire year. And then these changes would then happen in the following assessment year. So the estimated house price in two thousand and twenty one was two hundred and sixty four thousand, three hundred and seventy two dollars, and our tax rate currently is one point three four two eight. So the average property tax in two thousand and twenty one would have been three thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. Using the two thousand and twenty two average price of the two hundred and eighty one thousand that I indicated, with our proposed tax rate of one point three one six three is thirty seven hundred and two dollars. So therefore, the estimated increase would be about a hundred and fifty two dollars a year, or just under thirteen dollars a month. And of course, all of these amounts will change based on the assessed value of 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 an individual's home, but using the average. So our assessment, so we always track the information. We do a lot of ten-year analysis. And and so what you see in front of you here are our last ten years' assessments. So the assessment numbers now are final, but of course, our tax rate, our total warrant revenue, total budget and budget growth are proposed and not final until council approval. So our assessment base has increased by about twenty nine percent since two thousand and thirteen, and our tax rate has increased by about nine point six cents, which is just under one cent per year. So here's our assessment base growth, just presented in a different way in a graph format. So our assessment growth has been fairly stable over the last ten years with a few anomalies. In two thousand and eighteen, we decreased our assessment base. So it's kind of like a negative growth, which kind of doesn't make sense, but really, that's what happened. And this year, we've seen exceptional growth. Exceptional growth that we haven't seen in the last ten years. We, you know, maybe one other time in the last twenty years. So we are a growing community, and so I do anticipate continued growth, but not at the rate that we're currently seeing this year. So we are starting to see prices increase, supply chain issues, and significant delays for delivery. As we continue in the pandemic, and as our acting CAO indicated earlier, we don't know when it's going to end. So one of our major sources of revenue besides our tax base is our Canada Community Building Fund, or previously known as the Gas Tax. I think I may call it Gas Tax forever, but I'm going to try. So we are going into year four of our program, so it's from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty three. And we hope for the continued growth and the continued offering of this program. We have seen two years so far of the program where we've been able to receive additional funds in the form of a top-up. And we've been able to accomplish significant infrastructure improvements with these funds. In two thousand and twenty two, the funds will mainly be used in the utility fund. But we also are still ensuring that we're using about six hundred thousand dollars per year to help fund our street capital program. So here's our spending graph for the Canada Community Building Fund. So again, due to utility infrastructure replacement demands, no other significant grant funding currently available, and little room for large amounts of borrowing in the utility fund, we did have to switch funds from the general fund to the utility fund. So this is that balancing act of priorities that we are constantly faced with in running a municipality. So our debt ratio, our debt ratio in two thousand and twenty one was nine point one percent. And for two thousand and twenty two, it'll be six point eight percent. And we only anticipate it to increase to about seven point five nine percent by the year two thousand and twenty six. We have anticipated additional borrowing of about one point four million per year for street capital. Interest rates are currently very low, so we have used the interest rate of one percent in our projections, and this is in alignment with our current debentures. We previously were using about three point two percent. But again, interest rates are significantly lower. So fiscal services. So this is where we record our long-term debt and our interest charges, as well as our transfers to reserves and our transfers to the capital fund. The decrease in our debt service is related to paying off a debenture instead of refinancing. And also, a few capital lease items have dropped off the schedule as they are now fully paid. We have maintained our transfers to reserve in two thousand and twenty two as our asset management plans call for long-term financial planning and consistently adding to our reserves supports this strategic direction. With the increased assessment dollars, we were able to increase the funding from operating to our capital fund, decrease our borrowing, which was a recommendation from our finance committee. So a lot of numbers on this slide, but this is really, in essence, our detailed information on our long-term debt. And you can see that it is fairly stable for the next five years. In two thousand and twenty seven, we will see that we have paid off our largest debenture. And with a strategic plan coming into place and our asset management by then hopefully fully implemented, I am excited for the opportunities that this will bring our town. So reserve funds. This is the saver in me. Our reserve funds are improving, and this will be a good option for future funding when times are lean. And we maybe see a year with negative assessment base movement. So we are anticipating some significant increases in expenses and anticipate a significant increase in the average CPI in New Brunswick. I did some calculations for some of our contracts that we had, and for two thousand and twenty, our average New Brunswick CPI was point two two percent. So far this year, in our budget where we've had to estimate for CPI, it's at three percent. And I anticipate that might even be higher by the time we get into two thousand and twenty two. Having healthy reserves will help cushion these increases. So we can use these funds to fund projects without an increase to the tax base in the year that those expenses need to occur. It may also give us opportunities to take advantage of potential grants, of which sometimes the timing is, can be unexpected for us. And this would, having healthy reserves would allow us to have our matching funds needed to be able to utilize some of this grant money, again, without increasing the tax rate in the year that that expense is going to occur. So we are maintaining our transfers to reserve while also pulling out a significant amount out of reserves in this year. So we're going to be funding items like part of the fire station number two renos and our new utility building. So administration has provided you a balanced budget implementing various suggestions from our finance committee. We are proposing a decrease to our tax rate directly related to the increased assessment. We are either maintaining or improving our level of service in most areas. We are also going to be embarking on creating council strategic plan, and we feel that this budget will support that process. So the options before you are as follows. Accept the proposed budget as presented. Decrease the expenditures, which would lower the tax rate, increase the expenditures, which would increase the tax rate. We could borrow to finance capital, which would help to decrease or maintain the tax rate. Or we can withdraw from reserve to fund these expenditures. So for this year, with our assessment, one cent is equal to two hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and fifty six dollars worth of expenditures. So any questions on our general fund?
Thank you, Ms. Brandon. I'll open the floor now to councillors for questions. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for your team, for all your hard work. It's much appreciated. Did you say one cent is two hundred thousand?
Yes.
So I remember when it was fifty thousand, two hundred thousand. Okay.
So if you, if you, if you look at the the first page, the the budget summary, and you look at our tax base, so it is two billion, eighteen million, five hundred and fifty eight thousand, seven hundred. So you just divide that out and that becomes what our one cent is, so.
So if we wanted to further reduce, we'd have to come out with two hundred thousand dollars out of the budget.
If you wanted to decrease by one cent.
If we wanted to further reduce, okay. That answers that question. The other question I had is, when you did your average price, a home in Quis Pam Sis, and I know that's based on two thousand and seven fifteen data, did you say, or?
No, the average home price, so it's using our GIS system as we have it mapped out in alignment with kind of our garbage collection and stuff and whatnot. We take out areas that don't have some of the municipal services that we provide. It's all through the GIS, and we use the actual two thousand and twenty two assessment list that we got from the Service New Brunswick, and we line that up and then average it out. And it's really for single-family and two-unit family dwellings, that we, that's how we kind of calculate the average.
Okay, so so you just take the two hundred and eighty one times the tax rate?
Yes.
So that, so for that, a house that price, assessed at that price, their savings would be sixty nine dollars. Is that what you had?
Uh, no. So the average home price is two hundred and eighty one thousand, two fifteen, times our proposed tax rate of one point of 1.3163 would mean that their property taxes is 3702 under the current, or under the average price at our current tax rate, that would be the 3550. Did I not do that right?
I'm just getting different figures. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I had it as $152 increase or $13 a month.
$2 saving.
$152 increase because of the assessment is still increasing, even though our tax rate is still dropping.
Oh, I was, okay, I'm sorry. I was taking what it would have been based on today at $1.34 and what it will be at $1.31. And what, that's?
The assessments went up.
But you, so you're not using the same figure, the 281 to 115?
Um, no. So when I'm comparing, so, just let me make sure my notes are here. So what I'm saying is that somebody's tax rate, so somebody's assessment and our current tax rate in 2021, they, like in strictly in dollar terms, they would have paid $3,550 in 2021 based on the average 2021 price and our tax rate. Now with the new average price at our lowered tax rate, it would be $152 a year increase.
And, and just, Deputy Mayor Schreier, I believe that was based on an average price of $254,372.
264,372 is what it was in 2021.
372, okay.
So I'm looking at it as strictly dollar, what they would have paid in 2021 to what they would be paying in 2022.
Thank you.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, did you have anything further to?
Uh, no, I'm a little confused on that. I, I was just using the same assessment with just the price.
Yes, and that would be, that would be less.
31.
Yeah, that would be less, but then that doesn't account.
Actually less if they're paying $1.31. That's what I was trying to get at. I'm sorry.
Yes, sorry, because our tax rate is gone.
The tax rate, the, the, our resident will actually be paying less in that example.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But not compared to what their real dollars would be, so.
Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Your Worship, through you. So, so the assessments, when you look at, I'm just gonna, I have a question on reserves, but before I get there, is hopefully, hopefully I'll add clarity and not create more mud. When we looked at the numbers after the P-GAAP, because we looked at the 9.8% because we included the old and stuff, but when you look at it, anyways, the average house went up 6 point something percent. Then there was new building that added on the rest. So with the, with taking 2.65 cents off the tax rate of 1.34, you're increasing a little over two, sorry, you're decreasing over 2%, but if the average, average person's house went up 6%, you take that off, the average person's still going to pay 4% more because everything else has gone up. So, so regardless of what your house price is, the average person's paying 4% more in their, their tax bill at, at the end.
Yes.
I don't know if that added clarity or?
And that, that's what I was trying to show with my 152 is that.
Yeah, no matter how, yeah. So my question is, uh, thank you, first of all. I know it's a lot of hard work for you and your team. My question is more on future reserves. So I do agree with everything you just said, like we need to have, if we get an opportunity that the government's going to match something to, to have the funds there. But I think we have to figure out as a council, what is the, I know on the utility reserve, there's a maximum you're allowed to have, I believe, in utility. But we need to figure out what is the maximum we want because how big do we need to get it? And, and my, my dilemma, and I understand why, because I look at, we've got, Envision St. John's going up a lot next year. We know police is still going to go up next year because of the, the hiring. We, 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 we all, and fire. We also know that things that we haven't budgeted for, but I know will come out of reserves is whatever happens with traffic calming. We have, we have amples that we don't have to come back to the town and ask for more money. We, we've got it all there. So I, I think just as a council or maybe a director from staff to give us recommendations, what should that reserve level be at all those different buckets so that we, kind of like we're doing asset management, we're doing everything else? Like what is that magic number we need? And then we kind of go from there.
So I have a whiteboard in my office, so I don't know if you've seen, if anybody has, you know, says some words on it that I'm crazy and some things like that, but well, good intentioned. And what's highlighted in red is our strategic plan. So with a council document guided a strategic plan for us, I can then take that plan. We can update it, incorporate it into our asset management, into our master recreation plan. I would like to see a long, I would like to see a user fee policy, a growth policy, reserve policies, long-term financial planning. All of those things are going to come from the strategic direction, and that, that's a number that I'm looking for from, yeah, that's, we need that. That's the next step. That's where we're at now.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. I don't see any other questions at this point. Oh, one second, please. Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, Worship. I was actually going to make a comment earlier, but I guess we weren't really given a chance. I thought we were gonna. So I do have a, just a comment about the police budget, and then I also have another question. I just feel it prudent being on the police board. I just wanted to remind people because I know it seems like a lot of money, and especially for people that are going to watch this at home later, and you know, again, the trend right now is defund the police, not fund the police, is that we, the, the Regional Rosé Police Force hasn't, I'm sorry, the Regional Kennebec Cases Valley Police Force hasn't actually hired a uniform officer since 1998. So that's over 20 years. And when you think about what's happened in 20-plus years, our town has grown, our businesses have grown, the amount of kilometers of streets have grown. You know, and also in terms of even just a common occurrence that we hear as councilors is, you know, traffic calming and all that kind of stuff. So, you know, they do need resources. Like I know one of the biggest parts of their budget is the four additional police officers. I'm really happy that they were able to get the money they asked for because I think it is needed. And also in terms of risk management, I think, you know, we, we never want to be in the situation where we're looking, you know, kind of hindsight and have something serious happen in our community. We're so fortunate to be one of the safest communities in, in Canada. But again, there's always the chance. So I, anyway, I just wanted to put that into context because it, it seems like a lot, and it seems like a lot of extra bodies, but I know they worked really hard to continue to pare it down, so I just wanted to put that in context.
So I will say too, like as an administration as well, we were, we were very supportive of that. And again, these are protective services, so specifically our fire and our police. So they have strategic plans. They have guidance that is helping them to present this information forward both to their boards and then as well to the joint councils. And so for us, going into a strategic planning process here, we're very supportive of that. Like there's a reason a strategic plan is done, and there's a cost associated with that level of service and that strategic plan. So we're actually very excited about that and very supportive of that.
Question is, you know, I think, again, thank you and your team. I think there's a lot of work that goes on to, goes into this. And again, kudos to the finance committee because I'm sure, you know, everyone is very tired of looking at these numbers, whereas a lot of us have only seen them for a few days. Again, one of the things that can, not concerns me, but I still don't, like I know we've talked about it and I feel like it's the squeaky wheel, is, you know, we, we keep saying, well, you know, active transportation, we'll put it to the side, we'll put it to the side. And I guess one question I have, if I vote for this budget, is I don't want to get two or three down, months down the road and decide, okay, well, we want to do something, but now we haven't budgeted any money for it because there wasn't a line item. There was some line item for sidewalks and, you know, and it seems like, well, you know, if we want to do it, it's going to cost more. Well, we haven't put any more aside to even explore that as an option. So I don't know what's the flexibility if, you know, we get to strategic planning or, you know, we, we look at, you know, some recreation, the recreation master plan, and we come back and say, okay, you know what? We do need to add some additional kind of infrastructure on our roadways, but now we don't have the money to do it. And I guess I just want to be proactive and not have the situation where we have now where we've recently paved a few roads that are more collector roads, and it would cost even more to go back and try and adjust them after the fact. So I just want to be proactive enough that we're not in that situation moving forward.
And from a financing kind of standpoint, I can just say that, again, you know, if we, if we need to do something and we haven't budgeted for it, we would come to council with a recommendation for that. And having healthy reserves and having money so that we can act very quickly on a lot of those things is, is very good for our town. So I'm very supportive of, of our reserve funds and making sure that they're built up. What number that is, I don't know yet, but you know, at the end of 2022, we're projecting to have almost, almost 2 million in our general fund capital reserve. So we would be able to have some funds if we need to tack quickly on something.
Just one clarity question. So let's say our master transportation plan comes back, and it does suggest a few things. We, in theory, if the council felt that it was the time to do it, we could pull some money out of reserves. Is that?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
In theory, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Luck. Any other questions? I don't see any further.
So just like with Gary's presentation, now I'm going to review the utility fund, the infrastructure in the, in the ground. And then again, at the end of my presentation, I'm going to review all the changes that have occurred since we originally submitted the budget to finance committee, and then we can get into discussion and debate. So our utility fund. So our utility operating fund revenue is proposed to be $3.6 million for 2022. We need to ensure stability in our utility fund by slowly increasing the rates so that we can pan, plan for the future and pay for all of our current expenditures. So we are proposing the following rates, and you can refer to page 33 of the actual budget document that has the utility rates on it. So we are proposing, and what is included in this operating budget, is a sewer user fee is proposing to, we're proposing to increase it by 2.98%. So that would take our rate currently from 503 to $518 annually. Our water rate increases, so our fixed component, we're proposing to increase that by 2.88% to the annual fixed charge. So that would take our rate from $243 to $250. And then our consumption would be a 3% increase. So that would take it from 0.9902 to 1.0199 for the first 96 cubic meters per quarter. And from 1.5681 to 1.6151 for usage above the 96 cubic meters per quarter. So the largest expenditure in our utility fund is our debt service costs. Our utility assets have long useful lives but are very expensive to build. So we are funding 566,000 of capital through our operating fund for this year. And we are still able to put in about $329,000 into reserves again for future use and sometimes for specific projects. So we have not borrowed for the last number of years in our utility fund. So our debt ratio in utility has dropped, but it currently is 25.74%. We don't have any additional borrowing planned until 2024 and 2025. And we do have a few borrowings totaling about $91,000 that are going to drop off. So we can borrow up to 50% in our utility fund. It's not something I would recommend. The debt service costs would be extravagant. But by having it at now the 25.74%, it does give us some room to borrow for some future utility products, projects, sorry. But we also need significant grant funding. And this is why we've been using the, the CCBF fund to help build our utility infrastructure. So with our utility rates, so council should consider the sustainability of the rates. So as we know, we will need significant funding in the future as per our asset management fund, our management plan, and for any future water expansion. So growing the rate slowly now provides funding for our current infrastructure and our current expenses, but it also helps us to save for future utility projects that would be coming down the line. And again, like I've said, these are long useful life assets, but very expensive, so it takes a lot of planning and coordination. So again, the budget was prepared with rate increases as shown there that I've already gone through. Expensive assets, but very short presentation. Any questions on our utility?
Thank you, Ms. Brandon. I'll appeal to council to see if they have any questions at this time. Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Thank you. I'm just looking at the proposed increase rate for sewage. And when you go from 2.39, which is a nice figure because it's under 3%, but to the 3.98, it's only difference of $5 a year? It was 518?
It's, it's currently 503.
Oh, it's currently 503. Oh, I'm sorry.
We're proposing that it go up to 518.
Okay, I was looking at the?
And it is a $15 change again this year. We're trying again to slowly increase them without the spikes.
Okay, thank you. I was looking at the wrong figure. Thank you.
Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Sorry, I'm, I'm just gonna add another comment because I think, Ms. Brandon, it's the year you may have started. And it's about sewage rates. We knew back then we had a lot of sewage projects going. We were quite lucky, quite honestly, the, the, I'm going to call it the gas tax came in a couple of times to help us. But back then, we know, knew there was some major projects coming in. And that year, I believe we, about four years ago, we increased it almost 9% the sewage rates just to get ready for where we are. So, or else we'd be even probably asking for greater increases. So it's been, you know, we don't have the asset management thing totally done, but it was, we, we knew stuff was coming, so. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. Counselor Olson.
Thank you, Your Worship. I would just like to say that I am prepared to make a motion to accept the tax rate as, as proposed unless the chairman of a finance committee would like to make that motion instead. Okay. All right. Thank you, Counselor Miller. Therefore, Your Worship, I would move that the council at Tana Quis Pam Sis set the tax rate for 2022 at $1.3163.
It's been moved by Counselor Olson. Counselor Miller on the question, or do we? It's been moved by Counselor Olson that the tax rate of 1.3126?
1.3163.
1.3163? Be accepted by council. On the question. I think we have a counselor out right now, so if we could wait, please, so we can have his input. Counselor, Deputy Mayor Schreier, you have a question on? Counselor, uh, Deputy Mayor Schreier, you have a question on the question.
Do I have to wait? For him on the question?
We do have uh, more than a quorum. I don't know if we can continue on. Can we? Yes, may I ask your question?
So my question is, is I just want to be very clear that right now we're voting that this will be it. Would there be no more, there, no more further discussion on the tax rate? Or is this something that council will continue to speak on or we have more opportunities to, for input? I just want to be really clear on what I'm voting on.
The motions on the table, I'm going to go to the acting C A O.
Uh, traditionally, your worship, thank you. When we have these Saturday sessions, it's designed to give uh, staff um, the go-ahead to prepare the budget documents and move forward um, so that we can meet the deadline prescribed by the provincial government. And we're planning to have a finalized budget on the November sixteenth meeting, I believe, is the date of that Tuesday night. So if people wanted to make changes on particular line items, today would be the day to do it. But again, if council is looking to move forward with the budget as presented, we're quite pleased with that as well. But again, it's council's prerogative as to how they want to proceed today.
Sorry, and I will just add that um, we would be bringing back the budget on, I believe it's the November second. Um, if there was any changes or anything, so we would be bringing it to council and out of committee of the whole on the November second. So there would be opportunity um, then for discussion. If there was any changes, then we would come back on the sixteenth and then do final approval. That's typically how we've done it previously.
On the question, Counselor Miller.
Thank you, worship. Um, I'm gonna repeat part of that just because I know uh, Counselor Donovan was out, but my, why my light was on, kind of, kind of was exactly like Deputy Mayor had asked is, generally, if there's something here that you do not want or you want to change, this is the time that you would say, okay, I don't want this item, I want to take it out. And then we'd go around and vote. Or I'd like to change this item to be thirty thousand versus fifteen thousand. Then we go around and vote, uh, because that gives staff ample time to get everything else ready. Because if we come back again in two weeks and we decide to change something after that, we're back into this whole thing. So um, if there's something somebody doesn't like and wants changed, um, I'm looking at a few of them. I'm actually quite happy with the combination of, of everything we've done. I, I had some challenges on different things. You've explained the asset man, the, the plans, transportation plan, recreation plan. And all, I'm personally unsatisfied. Um, reserves, I'm kind of iffy, but I, I get where we're going. So I'd like to see what those numbers are going to be. But um, this is the time that, that's why we've been here all day. If there's something you don't want, you want to change, you want the tax rate higher, you want the tax rate lower, you want something taken out, throw it out there and then explain why and then we redo a vote, so.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. Uh, just bearing in mind as well that we do have a deadline which has been put forth by the province and that is for mid-November. So on the sixteenth is our last council day before we have to submit this. And uh, I believe I'm correct on that, but I stand to be corrected. And I'm going to go to the uh, who wants to go first? Okay.
Yeah, so the deadline to submit the budget to the province wa, is November fifteenth. We were going to be um, finalizing it and completing it on the sixteenth, thereby submitting it on the seventeenth, which would be two days late. I was okay with that. It fit within our council's schedule. But if everything is, is okay now, we can bring it forward on the November second date. We could then um, definitely meet the date and we might be one of the only or the first ones maybe to do that, so.
Thank you, Ms. Brandon. Counselor Olson.
Thank you, worship. Uh, my purpose in bringing forth the motion is to recognize the eight hours of debate that we've had all day today. And I think it's been quite healthy uh, and informative. And uh, my motion was to close the discussions on the budget and recognize the rate that's been proposed that uh, I for one support it and would like to see it move forward as a completed tax rate for twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. On the question. Counselor Luck.
Thank you, your worship. And respectfully, I, I know we've been here a long time, but I think that the budget is quite important. So I think if, I just don't want anyone to feel like, you know, we have to sign off on it if, if they don't want to. Um, I'm still struggling and the reason I'm struggling with it because I think everyone's done a great job. I'm happy with the tax rate. I'm happy with the reserves. I still feel that, and I don't, and I don't want to add anything to the budget. I'm kind of looking at where can we add to make me happy? A little tagline that says active transportation so it doesn't get lost. I just feel like we've talked about this and we've had presentations. I hear on a regular basis from residents that they want us to explore this. And I just worry that because it hasn't even made it into a budget item line that we'll be here again next year having the same conversation. So at least if we have something tagged to it. So I don't know if there's something we could combine. I, I really don't want to add anything to the budget. I think you've done a great job developing it. But anyway, that's, I guess that's where I stand. I just don't want it to get lost because I just feel like, you know, continuously have this conversation. And I know there's definitely different viewpoints around the table, but um, you know, I just want it to be something that, you know, is a little bit higher on our radar as we make decisions moving forward.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. I'll just reiterate what um, the treasurer said that there, our monies aside, that if something did come up. Uh, the other thing to re, remember is that we are in the midst of developing our master transportation plan. Um, I know that the Director of Community Services is hoping to get the active transportation plan, uh, active recreation plan and uh, and that we have uh, our strategic plan, which will also be developed. And those will fall under the umbrella. I understand that you are looking for a monetary amount, I think, is what you're asking. So uh, because we don't have that plan in place yet, um, to guide us, um, we need those guiding principles. Uh, I think I will rely on what Ms. Brandon said, that there are reserves available should something come up out of that plan and through the committee that's going to be struck at our next meeting uh, for the active transportation. Deputy Mayor Schreier on the question.
On the question, I, just my last comment and I, I would have liked to have seen the budget a little tighter. I would have liked to have seen the tax rate go down a little bit more. And the reason for that is that I know that there will still be people paying more based on their assessment. Our assessments did go up nine, uh, nine percent. And um, even at that, people are still going to pay, pay more with our reduction in our tax rate. Uh, so, you know, to, to two hundred thousand dollars is one cent. I mean, if we, I would have felt a little bit more comfortable if people were having a wash this year, no, nothing going up in their um, tax bill. Um, so in order to do that, we'd probably have to find another fifty thousand out of this. Um, that's just my personal feeling. If we could have just tweaked it a little bit further. Uh, and uh, but I, I won't hold the budget up because of it, if that's the wish of council. But I would have liked to have seen it tweaked a little bit more.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Bigger.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to um, mention in conjunction with what Counselor Luckett said, I also feel strongly about the um, application of the values of the active transportation, you know, uh, plan, maybe perhaps not specifically the plan from, you know, eleven years ago, whatever, as we had a very fulsome discussion uh, with the Director of Engineering on that. But I just wanted to say that I have confidence, uh, a high measure of confidence between the development of the asset management plan, the master transportation plan, the recreation plan. And I think there seems to be a deep rut here where we all have a, a sense of the importance of this. So I, I feel like we have our finger on this quite effectively and moving forward with the strategic planning that my heavens, the, it just keeps piling up, the strategic planning of one form or another. The Galactic Plan is coming. But anyway, I just wanted to say I feel very confident about that. So I, I can, I'm, I'm certainly prepared to support this budget as it's presented. And I also just want to say I really greatly appreciate all the incredibly hard work that everybody's gone to on this. Thank you.
On the question, uh, Counselor Donovan.
Uh, thank you, your worship. I don't have a question or um, any modifications to make to the budget. Uh, when I walked in here this morning, I was a little bit out of it because I, I get caught up in the fact that the, the uh, the um, police board is asking for four new uh, members, but I, over the course of the uh, last couple hours, I've come to realize that it's probably um, for the best. So again, I'm, I'm ready to uh, support the uh, budget as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan. Uh, Counselor Olson, you made the motion to support the current budget. Would you mind repeating your motion, please?
Good. I think the clerk has it, worship.
Yes, please, just so everyone knows.
It was moved by Counselor Olson. Count, the council of the town of Quispam Sis accept the tax rate as proposed for twenty twenty-two at one point three one six three cents. And it be presented to the November second, twenty twenty-one regular meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Snow. On the question, please vote now. Would you like a show of hands or would you like it electronically? Are you voting in favor? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn the special meeting committee of the whole of council? Moved by Counselor Olson that we adjourn. We don't need a second round that, I don't think. Not yet. Okay, it's been moved by Counselor Olson that we adjourn the special meeting. Please vote now. Could I please have a motion to adjourn the special meeting? And that has been moved by Counselor Bigger. Do we need a second round? Uh, that's been seconded by Counselor Olson. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried, seven, zero. I think, uh, I'd like to thank staff for the hard work during very challenging times. Certainly, there are many in our community who might say, let's keep status quo. There are many who want a certain level of service and there are those of us who are looking to the future to maintain a level of service and to live our best life in the community of Quispam Sis. Uh, we're looking forward to the future. We're looking forward to moving forward out of COVID and the challenges that, that has presented. So thank you, everyone, for today and uh, we will see you on November the second. Thank you. Have a good day, everyone.